Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey.
President.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. President Reed. Seventeen present.
Do we have a copy of the prayer? Having a quorum, the Board of Aldermen will now come to order. We are missing our minister today. We have our minister today, thank you, I'm sorry. I have not had the opportunity of meeting Pastor Burton, but Pastor Burton is here to join us and lead us in prayer today. Pastor Burton leads the congregation of the New Northside Missionary Baptist Church. Please come up Pastor.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity. Certainly appreciate President Reed for the invitation, and I know some of you who are here, let us pray. Dear God, we are so humbled and grateful that the business of this great city, this city that's a gateway to the West, is being taken care of by those who are in the sound of my voice. Dear Lord, we also thank you for the celebration of Clean Energy Day. We pray to all of those who are working to make sure that that's reality in this city, the Clean Air Commission, the various plans that are being made will be ones that would be honoring to all that are in this city, no matter whether the race, creed, gender, orientation, belief of faith, no belief of faith, economic status, political persuasion, that all may be blessed. Dear Lord, we also pray that there be wisdom present in this room, patience, knowledge, and understanding that the decisions that are made are to affect the whole. Dear Lord, we pray that St. Louis would be an example for the nation, and Lord, that we would be humble in that example. Dear Lord, we also pray that there would be a spirit of unity, we reject the spirits of division that are affecting our country right now. We pray that colleagues, whether they don't agree, can agree to be agreeable. All these things we ask in the name of our Creator.
Thank you Pastor Burton. Is she read that or do I recognize? Announcements or special order of business? Alderman Kennedy is recognized for, to move, for courtesy resolutions, calendar?
You see me? Mr. Vice President, members of the Board, I move that we adopt a courtesy resolution calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th and seconded by the 25th, Alderman from the 25th. Alderman from the 28th, do you want to approach the dais for a special order of business
Good morning everyone. Thank you Alderman from the 17th. Good morning colleagues, thank you to all the members of the Board who are here with us today to celebrate Energy Efficiency Day. Getting all these folks up here, have been working hard on measures to help improve our city, and today, October 5th, is Energy Efficiency Day, and energy efficiency is one of those solutions that everyone can participate in, and it's something that we all benefit from. So we know that when we do things like replace windows and improve insulation, that people are not only saving money on their electrical bills, but that we are also improving health, we are reducing exposure to lead paint, so the benefit we're providing jobs in the community, and the people that you see up here today are some of those folks who represent the hard work that we are doing in this city to move forward energy efficiency, clean energy solutions. And through the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, or PACE, known as Set the Pace here in St. Louis, we have delivered more than $28 million to fund 100 energy efficiency and renewable energy projects in the city of St. Louis. We have created over 428 good paying local jobs and abated 34,000 metric tons in the form of carbon dioxide emissions. So today, we proclaim, October 5th is Energy Efficiency Day, and we celebrate five years of the Set the Pace Program in St. Louis, one of the most successful programs in the country that provides private financing for energy retrofits. So I'd like to invite Byron Delir from Y-Green to say a few words about the success of this
Thank you Heather. My name is Byron Delir, and I'm the program administrator for Set the Pace St. Louis. And there are a few names that I'd like to mention that have been involved in the success of this program, which was started in 2013. So I wanted to thank Heather Navarro for recognizing the program, and President Louis Reed, as well as SLDC's Otis Williams, the Sustainability Director of the City of St. Louis, Catherine Warner, Mayor's Frances Slay and Leiter Crusen. Also Renew Missouri was critical in helping getting the legislation passed in 2010 in Jefferson City. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention our volunteer PACE board, which includes Pat Justice, the USGBC's Emily Andrews who's here today, Sid Coltoon, Shelby Watson, and also SLDC staff Bonnie Wade, Jackie Harris, and also my partner Tom Applebaum is here today, and Mike Lemire from Y-Green Energy Fund, and Rockwood Asset Management, Jared Forbes is with Rockwood here today. So for nine years, I've dedicated myself to propelling the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program in Missouri. And in 2010, we got the law passed, and the program launched in 2013. And today, I'm really excited to tell St. Louis that our program, on a per capita basis, has provided more commercial PACE funding than any other individual PACE jurisdiction in the entire nation. So we are number one in terms of the concentrated application of this innovative financing tool that saves folks on their energy bills, it creates good paying jobs that can't be outsourced, and it protects the environment by reducing 34,000 metric tons of carbon pollution. There's also, thank you, yes, number one in the country. And there's also something, also very significant, is that our program really attempts to amplify the city priorities of racial inclusion. And if you look at the spread of about 125 projects that we've done in the city, it's all over the city, in the north, in the south, and so this is really an exemplar for the diverse application of sustainability solutions to increase home health and comfort and save folks on their energy bills. So with that, I'd like to introduce Diane with MoCan, she's going to say a few words about the work that we've done in performing pre-apprenticeship training workshops and getting minority contractors involved in this work. We have over 17 minority contractors involved in the PACE program, and so I'd like to introduce Diane.
Good morning, my name is Diana Hankson, I'm here to represent MoCan this morning. First and foremost, we would like to thank the Board of Aldermen for inviting us and allowing us to participate in this resolution. MoCan is really, was really excited to embrace the concept of energy saving concept with PACE and Y-Green. They were relentless in assisting our minority contractors with the qualification process, in addition to that identifying contracting opportunities. But for me, what excited me more was the opportunities that they gave to our pre-apprenticeship training program. A lot of those individuals never had any idea that they would have an opportunity to work in those particular crafts and fields in the energy conservative area, so we really thank them. They have continued their relationship with us, and we hope that they continue that relationship for as long as they serve the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you Byron and Diane. I also want to recognize the other groups and individuals that are here with us today. So in addition to Y-Green Energy Fund, we also have the Rockwood Group, Andrew Linares is here from Renew Missouri, Emily Andrews from the U.S. Green Building Council, Missouri Gateway Chapter, we also have Reverend Rodrick Burton from New Northside Missionary Baptist Church, and also Claude Brown representing the St. Louis NAACP, and Bruce Morrison from Great Rivers Environmental Law Center, and Erin Young from East-West Gateway. So this has really been a very collaborative effort that, as you've seen, has had many different benefits, it touches on so many different aspects of our lives here in St. Louis, it's a wonderful example of a collaboration, something all of us in the city of St. Louis can be proud of. So thank you to all of you for your hard work, and happy Energy Efficiency Day.
Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your hard work. Is there any discussions regarding the courtesy resolutions? Hearing no discussion, oh, I'm sorry, the Alderwoman from the first is recognized. We could divide them, generally it's my understanding that we do that collectively, but we can divide the motion if you so choose.
My question is, and it might be real stupid, I have my name Bishop Ward, and so I take that off, the consent, so that I can do that, but if we can just do it as a courtesy, I'd like my name added to both this resolution and Bishop Ward's, which is coming up.
I believe that's within our rules, so.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we, Alderwoman from the 14th.
And also, my name added to this resolution also, please.
And that's the specific resolution, is that not correct? Alderwoman from the 14th, do you have the resolution number, you want your name added to here?
Resolution 146.
Just exclusively 146, okay. Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, the, having had a motion to approve the courtesy resolutions, and it's been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I think we normally do a photo op here, so.
Yeah, maybe we suggest that we come down right over here.
Okay, by your motion, you had approved the courtesy resolution consent calendar, we now move to honored guests. Are there any announcements or introductions of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, my predecessor whose shoes I am still trying to fill, Farmer Alderman Fred Wessels, and current state representative Fred Wessels. And I also have, I would also like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans, and Keith Taylor from the Carpenters Regional Council, thank you.
Alderwoman from the 27th, Ward.
Thank you Mr. President. My honored guests are Coro Fellows, Gabrielle Bloom, Brittany Jones, Nicholas Morgan, and Frederick Surgery with Circe with Plumbers and Pyphips.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to back the truck up a bit and make a motion to approve resolution number 146.
Oh, I believe, Alderwoman, we approve that with the consent calendar for courtesy resolution.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to have as my honored guests Nathan Lett and Demetris Alfred, President of the Firefighters Local 73, Claude Brown, Clinton McBride Laborers Local 110, Megan Shackelford, and Joyce Roberts, candidate for St. Louis School Board, thank you.
Alderwoman from the 14th, incidentally, any help that you can give today is more than welcome, so.
I'm just kind of.
Yeah, keep a close eye on that agenda, because we're not.
All right, we want to make sure.
We're looking for constructive criticism here. Any other honored guests? Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Mr. Leroy Grant, also our current License Collector, Ms. Mavis Thompson, and her coworker Jerome Murray, also from the License Collector's office, and also my state representative too, Fred Wessels.
Any other, Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize again, the fellows that are sitting over here, and I'd like for them to stand, so that they can be seen, because they're going to have an opportunity today to see how this government operates, and it's going to be much different from what you're taught in any political class anywhere, so you can see the raw deal today. We welcome you on our chambers today. I also would like to recognize retired educator Dr. Joyce Roberts.
Any other honored guests? Seeing no other honored guests, the Alderman from the 18th is recognized for approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Board approves the minutes of the September 21st meeting.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let the minutes reflect that the minutes have been approved. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
Okay, dispense with line items seven and eight. Does anyone want to take any bill off the third reading informal calendar? Anyone want to take, seeing none, we will move to resolutions informal calendar. Does anyone care to move anything off the resolutions informal calendar? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, first reading board bills.
Board Bill 120 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports, the President of the Board of Public Service, and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the memorandum of agreement for expansion of and improvement to inbound baggage system facilities, Terminal 2 at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, that memorialized the agreement between the city and Southwest Airlines Company under which Southwest will partially fund, contract for, administer, and manage the expansion and renovation of Terminal 2 baggage claim area, related equipment and facilities, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 121 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the concession agreement AL 252 between the city and Eventco LLC granting the concessionaire, subject to and in accordance to with the terms, covenants, and conditions of the agreement, certain rights and privileges in connection with occupancy and use of premises which is defined and more fully described in Section 201 of the amendment that was approved by the Airport Commission containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 122 sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing the mayor to submit an annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, Emergency Solutions, Grant and Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS, entitlement programs, authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of 2019 CDBG home ESG and HOPWOR funds appropriating the sum of $17,375,485, which the city estimates will be available for the 2019 CDBG program year appropriating the sum of $2,609,000, I'm sorry, it's $2,609,912, which the city estimates will be available for the 2019 home program year appropriating the sum of $1,461,624, which the city estimates will be available for the 2019 ESG program year and appropriating the sum of $1,824,600, which the city estimates will be available for 2019 HOPWOR program year and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 123 sponsored by Alderwoman Ingraccia, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real property owned by the city and located in city blocks 2007 and 2008 in the city of St. Louis and containing a severability clause. This ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of $650,000 and other good and valuable consideration of quick claim deed to remiss, released, and forever quick claim unto 2200 Washington LLC whose address is 1425 South 18th Street, St. Louis, Missouri 63104, certain city-owned property located in city blocks 2007 and 2008. Board Bill 124 sponsored by Alderwoman Ogilvy, an ordinance repealing Section 4, subsection 746.010 through 756.040 of ordinance number 51871 approved April 4, 1963, and pertaining to the establishment of decent literature commission, its organization's responsibility, powers, and purposes codified in Section 15.32.010 through 15.32.040 of the revised code of the city, 1994 annotated. Board Bill 125 sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5550 Filer. Board Bill 126 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3521, 3526, 3527, 3534 Oregon. Board Bill 127 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1815 Locusts. Board Bill 128 sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Warnie and Lexington regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Warnie and Lexington and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 122 and 123, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 120 and 121, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 126, to the HUD Committee, Board Bill 125 and 127, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 128, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 124. That is the extent of reference to committee.
It's been brought to my attention, I should explain why the President is not here today, the President is attending the funeral of Bob Carpenter. Bob is the husband of the longtime Recorder of Deeds, and it was brought to my attention that we should probably rise and take a moment of silence for someone that many of us in the chamber do know, so if we could. Thank you. Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 119 as amended sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, Mohammed, Jeffrey Boyd, and Vaquero, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety to enter into and execute and enter governmental agreement with the United States Marshal Service for Housing and Related Services for United States Marshals to contain these houses within a Division of Corrections. The following board bill was reported out of the HUD Committee. Board Bill 111 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from A, Single Family Dwelling District, and F, Neighborhood Commercial, to the F, Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 5177 and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services Committee. Board Bill 117 sponsored by Alderwoman Ornowitz, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services and through the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging, and to accept funding from Missouri Association of Area Agency on Aging in the amount of $120,000 over the next five fiscal years. That is the extent of second reading.
Report of special committees, we'll dispense with line item number 14, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill 20 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3452 Oregon. Board Bill 22 sponsored by Alderwoman.
plan for 3452 Oregon. Board Bill 22 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving, I'm sorry, Board Bill 20 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3452 Oregon. Board Bill 22 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3429 through 31 Ohio. Board Bill 23 sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3520 Wisconsin. Board Bill 33 sponsored by Alderman Martin and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4532 Bates. Board Bill 34 sponsored by Alderman Murphy and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 5019, 5032, and 5034 Ulena. Board Bill 32 sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 5780 McPherson. Board Bill 39 sponsored by Alderman Martin and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 7401 Vermont. Board Bill 40 as amended sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 6452 Nashville and 6453 Wade. Board Bill 79 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3437 through 39 Iowa. Board Bill 80 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3211 O Sage. Board Bill 81 sponsored by Alderman Martin and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 7714 through 18 South Broadway. Board Bill 82 sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2829 Iowa. Board Bill 84 sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2235 McNair. Board Bill 94 sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1420 through 22 Union. Board Bill 95 sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4213 Maryland. Board Bill 113 sponsored by Alderman Vollmer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3201 Morgan Ford. Board Bill 115 sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 408 through 410 North Sarah. Board Bill 118 sponsored by Alderman Spencer and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3520 through 22 Arkansas. Board Bill 98 sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing a third amendment to Section 1 of the Airport Schedule F, CIP Project, ordinance 67357, approved December 19, 2006, as amended by the ordinance 68650, approved June 2, 2010, and ordinance 68852, approved February 14, 2011, with which authorized a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis-Lambert International Airport and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 102 sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to accept and execute a certain airport aid agreement offered by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the marketing promotion of the air service at the airport for a maximum obligation of $350,000 for the reimbursement of direct costs associated with projects funded under the grant agreement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 104 sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the Port Authority of City of St. Louis Port District subject to the approval of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and authorizing certain actions and connections therewith. Board Bill 85 sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 705 through 719 North Second Street. Board Bill 112 sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Missouri and regulating all traffic traveling southbound on Missouri at and and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on and at Missouri and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
At the request of the Alderwoman from the 20th Ward, Board Bill Number 104 will be placed on the regular perfection calendar. For clarification for everyone, the consent calendar, we typically vote for all of those at one time. The perfection calendar, we vote on them individually. So the Chair will now recognize the Alderman from the 18th for approval of the perfection calendar, which would include everything except for Board Bill 104, which will then go on the regular perfection calendar. So, I'm sorry, perfection consent. So we're recognizing the Alderman from the 18th for, where is the, from the 18th, to move for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Hearing no objection, perfection consent calendar is passed. Now, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 104 sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the Port Authority of the City of St. Louis Port District subject to the approval of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and authorizing certain actions and connection therewith. This is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you. Board Bill 104 is...
I'm sorry, Alder, the former President, the President's former President, it sounds like he's deceased. The, our President corrects me all the time. I believe what you need to make a motion for perfection.
I'd like to make a motion to move Board Bill 104 to the informal calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to dispense with line item number 17. Line item number 18, third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill 110 sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Oldenburg and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $50 million principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2018, for the purposes of paying the cost of the project and cost of issuance of such bonds containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion to pass out Board Bill 110.
It's been moved and seconded by the Alderwoman from the 27th. Proceed, Alderman.
Yes, I'll renew my motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Ingrassia? Alderman Kotar? Alderman Rice? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Vollmer? Alderman Martin? Alderman Onowitz? Alderman Murphy? Alderman Howard? Alderman Green? Alderman Oldenburg? Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Kohn? Alderman Williamson? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Navarro? President Reed? Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Kotar? Alderman Murphy? 25 aye votes. I'm sorry, President Reed.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderman from the 26th Ward. First reading of resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry, we missed a report out of, a report of the enrollment committee.
Board Bill 110.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 148 sponsored by Alderman Ingrassia, the Board of Alderman supports the proposition an indigenous peoples' day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and the values of the indigenous peoples of our religion. That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Do we have it here? Do I need to sign or should we wait for him? Aren't we supposed to do that in open session? Where is it? For clarification purposes, we are bouncing back to the report of the enrollment committee, and I'm supposed to, while in open session, I hereby sign, do they have the little, don't I read this thing or something? I believe I'm supposed to read something, say that I'm signing that while in open session, which, but do they don't have the card up here for me, or? Huh? Okay. I affix my signature here too, in the end that it becomes law. I guess we did that right. Is that good enough for, all right, we had, we had first reading of resolutions now, man, we are all out of order. Okay, the Alderwoman from the 6th is recognized for resolution number... 148.
Thank you. I move that we send Resolution 148 to Health and Human Services.
Moved and seconded, that we move 148 to the Health and Human Services Committee. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading. Second reading of resolutions.
Resolution 104, committee substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, the authority to establish guidelines with regard to the terms of such real estate tax abatement for residential properties with new investment of less than $1 million based on established criteria.
Alderman from the 17th, you're recognized on Resolution 104, committee substitute as amended.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we approve, well, I guess I should start off with Resolution 104, committee substitute as amended, so I move to put that for the passage of that.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded for the adoption of Resolution 104, committee substitute as amended. The second came from Alderman from the 14th. Alderman from the 17th?
Yes, Mr. President, there should be before everybody on their desk, a floor substitute, so it's, now I am moving that we put before us Board Bill Number 104, committee substitute as amended, floor substitute.
It's been moved and seconded that we put the, you had a floor, everyone has it in front of them, the floor substitute, floor substitute for Resolution 104. It's been moved and seconded, who seconded it? Alderman from the 10th seconded. Okay. Alderman from the 17th?
Yes, Mr. President, the, as you can tell from the title of this board bill, there has been a considerable amount of discussion on this issue. The floor substit, we passed a bill out of committee with the understanding that we would have a floor substitute for it at the request of the Alderman from the 3rd. We have made some minor adjustments of the bill, of the resolution that was passed out of committee. This, I think, is our attempt to, in good faith, honor the commitment that was made to the Alderman in the 3rd in committee in this resolution on... The change that was made...
Alderman from the 17th, your motion was to put the floor substitute before us.
Correct, I'm sorry.
So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that.
That, that is what I'm speaking to. I was trying to explain what the floor substitute is, if that's appropriate.
Go right, you can continue with that.
And so, the intent of the floor substitute was to reduce the threshold necessary or to expand the, the most challenged portions of our city, some of the most challenged neighborhoods, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for the exact place in the resolution that was changed. It was just one item on the resolution. Oh, here it is, at the bottom of page four, second from the bottom, 30% was replaced with 35%. That had the effect of expanding the zone that the, that received the highest level of tax abatement, so that we had a much larger area that would be eligible for 10-year tax abatement plus an additional 15-year of 50% abatement. I, are the maps on everybody's desk? The maps are not on the desk? Okay, so the maps...
What, there's a issue? He's saying that the map is not before you.
Well, if we don't have the maps, we can't...
They don't have the maps.
The maps are not out, so we need to have the maps up here.
Put it on the informal.
We will, I think it's probably best that we put this on the informal calendar, Mr. President, since we do not have the maps, and I think there were colored maps that were prepared, and I think it would be an injustice to everyone to try to make them out to be black and white, so I would think that at this point it would be appropriate to just stick this on the informal calendar.
By the request of the sponsor, Madam Clerk, please place this on the resolutions informal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of second reading resolution.
Is the Vice President coming back up to the... We'll continue miscellaneous and unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements?
Wednesday, October 10th, Ways and Means Committee, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, October 12th, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. Saturday, October 13th, Transportation and Commerce Meeting, 10:00 a.m., St. John the Baptist Parish, 4200 Delore.
That is the extent of the announcements?
That is the extent of the announcements.
Any other announcements? Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to call for, I believe, Wednesday is October the 10th at 10:00 a.m. for a hearing on Resolution 148.
Any other announcements? Alderwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to invite everyone to come in.
I would like to invite everyone to come and join us in the Shaw Neighborhood Foodie Shaw Art Fair. That's going on Saturday and Sunday. Hours on Saturday from nine a.m. to five p.m. and Sunday from ten a.m. to five p.m. We have tons of local artists who will be here as well as artists from across the country. We've got food, we've got drinks. You can catch me all pour your beer from the beer tent while I'm fulfilling my volunteer shift on Saturday afternoon if you want to come by. And we also have the Best of Missouri Festival at the Missouri Botanical Gardens going on this weekend as well. So busy weekend over in my area, would love to see you all out. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
Continue.
I'm sorry, I'm being distracted. I just wanted to take a moment because we were in session and the last recognition and service for Mr. Carpenter is today. And so a lot of people probably... it's only about three people and three or four people in this room that have a number of years of reference to him. And I just wanted to take a few seconds to share with you that he was a very, very kind and respectful gentleman. Even though politics, he was around it all the time and of course he definitely supported his wife. He was always there at the fundraising place at Johnny Gito's and he would walk the room and talk to everybody on her behalf, but you always learned a little bit more about the history of the city of St. Louis and talking to him. So I wanted to say that I know she's going to be missing her partner. I know that aside from that, she is not going to be carrying on in the role that she had for thirty-plus years, but recognition is always important and you should always give those words to people irregardless to what you support, how you think, any of that. You set it aside at a time like this. And so I am setting it aside and I want to give my deepest sympathy to the Carpenter family. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you. At the request of the Chair of the Legislation Committee, I'd like to call a Legislation Committee meeting for eleven a.m. on Wednesday to hear board bills one twenty-four and board bill six. Thank you.
She didn't... the second board bill they didn't hear.
I'm told it's one eleven.
Any other announcements? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to announce some of our special guests today. Mrs. Joyce Roberts is located over there on the side. And we have Ms. Victoria Griffin and Justin Idlerberg, all residents in the twenty-sixth ward. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to publicly thank the residents of the twenty-seventh ward for their successful national night outs that we attended last week. And I was honored because as all people always try to say in North St. Louis, there's always crime and problems. We had quite a bit of national night outs and we had no incidents on that night. So thank you, twenty-seventh ward.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to piggyback on what the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh said. We had several night outs in what is now called the first ward. They started out in the twentieth ward. We have one street, the forty-eight-hundred block of Sacramento, San Francisco, and Margarete that's probably been doing it for twenty-something, twenty-odd years. And we also had a very successful standing room only first ward pin rolls meeting. I mean, we were overwhelmed by the amount of people came. We were looking for chairs and I want to thank everybody for coming out. We will be having a Mark Twain first ward meeting next Saturday between ten and noon. And lastly, I'd like to introduce my good friend, the fourth ward Committee Woman, DeWendell Evans, as my special guest.
Any other announcements?
A correction to the announcement for the Legislative Committee. It's board bill number six that will be heard along with the other board bill instead of one eleven.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? You stand for announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to announce a celebrity birthday, Alderman Brandon Bosley, who celebrated, I think, thirty-one yesterday.
Seeing no other announcements, Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized and excused, Alderman.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to move to excuse the Alderman from the fifth, the Alderman from the seventh, and the President for necessary absence.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. By your vote, we have excused those Alderpeople. Alderman from the twenty-second, you're recognized on the adjournment motion.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adjourn until Friday, October twelfth.
Been moved and seconded. The board adjourns to October twelfth. Any discuss... all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.